All right, we're going to call this meeting to order, everybody. So I'm going to ask you to all, please, keep the noise to a minimum. Thank you so much. I'm calling to order the Board of County Commissioners Board Meeting of September 13th, 2022. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kerner. Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks. Mayor Weinroth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner McKinley, would you please do the invocation and the pledge? Everybody, please rise.
Good morning. The mother and father of the world, we pray for the whole human family. Many nations are torn by war. Grant them peace and healing of their divisions. Many communities are filled with crime. Grant them deliverance from fear in the hope of renewal. Many families are divided by hate. Grant them unity and the blessings of love. Many children are abandoned and afraid. Grant them someone who loves them and the promise of a future. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the difficult but ever changing justice of our own.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. And show the Commissioner from District 5, Commissioner Sacks, has joined us. Okay. Madam Administrator, do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board, on page 13, item 383, has a revised summary. On page 85, item 6B2, is now being moved to public hearings. Proper advertising of this item as a public hearing item was completed. Page 93, 6G1, a revised motion and summary. That concludes additions, deletions, and substitutions.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Can I have a motion to adopt? I have a motion by the Vice Mayor. I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. All in favor, all opposed. Show that it's approved. 6 to 0. Okay. Just to give everybody a heads up on what's going to go on today. We're going to, after the consent agenda is addressed, we're going to have 11 proclamations, about four certificates of appreciation. We are going to go, if we have to, as long as noon. We're going to break for lunch at noon. We have matters by the public at 2:00, where we'll pick up anything left over on the agenda at that point, and then do matters by the public. And we'll be back here tonight at 5:05 to address the first hearing on the budget. So it's going to be a full day. Let's move on to the consent agenda. And I'm looking to see if we have any cards for the consent agenda.
Mayor.
I'm getting a no. Okay. I'm looking for my colleagues. Anybody want to pull anything?
I do. I'd like to pull 3G1, please.
3G1, Commissioner. Anybody else? Okay. Commissioner Moreno has pulled 3G1. Everything else is going to, then, I'm looking for a motion to approve. I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Moreno. All in favor, all opposed. Show that the consent agenda absent 3G1 has been approved. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized on 3G1.
Thank you, Mayor. So we'll take that up now, then?
It's in front of us.
Okay. As a board, actually, I would like to review this policy. And I am, I'm sure we have staff that will tell us how we came to this point where we have, we're collecting 2% of the penalty. But it's a bigger issue than that, and I think this is a policy that needs to be revisited by the board.
And you certainly are echoing a discussion I think we've had here before, Madam Administrator. And so, Mr. Rutter, would you like to take a stab at this?
I'd be happy to, Mayor. Good morning. I'll let Ramsey run you through the specifics of this really quickly, but definitely understand, and I think we, it seems like we have one of these about every two or three months or so. We'd be happy to take some direction from the board on looking into possibly the framework for a program that might address these a little differently than we have in the past, and give you some guidance on where we could go with things. Let me ask Ramsey, though, to walk you through this one really quickly, so you understand. I think with the larger points, that will be a challenge as we develop any policy. Every one is different, and they all become so subjective. So trying to find that sweet spot between what the board will want to implement and understanding the particulars of any given one.
And I think, you know, the point is well taken. We don't want to be looking to be arbitrary around this. There should be a process for this.
Absolutely. So.
Mr. Ramsey?
So this case started back in 2009, and it started off with an illegal addition to a single-family residence. They turned the garage into an apartment, per se, without the correct permits. So it went to a special magistrate hearing. They found force and violations, obviously some life safety violations, to the tune of $500 a day, and that continued for a substantial amount of time. And I'm just doing this kind of briefly. That property was owned by the current owner's parents. They then quitclaimed it to her while the tenants were still inside the unit. She was unaware until she was trying to sell it. They did some title search and found out these massive amounts of liens. She then, once she found these out, and Michelle Pagans here, she's the code enforcement director, she actually spoke with them, and they're actually here in the audience to explain further, once they've, once she found out about these violations, she spent about $60,000 and, in short order, put it into compliance. So what we have here is a very unique situation. We have this massive gap where something should have happened, and then we have this next step where something did happen. So this next step, if something did happen, is kind of what we were looking at. The sale price, I believe, is in the 170 range, 140 range, and OFMB can correct me if I'm wrong. And of that, we're collecting about 40%. So I know the numbers look huge, 2%, but in reality, it's 40% of the actual sale price of what they're getting. So with all that being said, and like I said, the owner, the current owner now that's in this predicament is here to talk, if you'd like to hear further. But with that being said, you know, we would like a little bit more guidance, because we'd like some more teeth with code enforcement with, you know, do we pursue foreclosures on some of these types of things? Do we start on life safety issues? And there's also different types of life safety. You have a life safety of, you know, you could have electrical done without a permit, but it might still be considered life safety even though it's done correctly. Or you could have electrical worked done in a pool. That's really life safety. So you've got two kinds of life safety, and how do you address those? So that's a little bit of our predicament. So, you know, some of the things that we've spoken about in order to get better compliance is potentially more notice, because we send out one notice that you're in violation, they either get it, or they say they didn't get it, and then they just forget about it. And it's just water on the bridge to them, and it just disappears. But if we potentially notice them some more, or take some more affirmative actions after one year, two years, something like that, with maybe potentially filing a foreclosure, or placarding the building as unsafe, or pulling the power, like we've done in some other cases, that, you know, we could do that. We're just looking for a little bit more direction. I'll give you some examples. We'll have another one coming towards you. Top Cat, that Melissa McKinley is familiar with. They'll be coming there over about $600,000, $700,000. Well, I don't think we're going to budge on that, because we pulled power and they still kept operating. You know, so you've got that one, and you've got this one, you know. So it's just, there's a lot of differences going on. So we can come back, you know, we've discussed various things. We can come back with some options of, we can do some more automated mailings potentially, like maybe every 90 days, you know, like building does. If your permit's going to expire, it's just automatic mailing that they get, hey, your permit's about to expire. We could do something to that effect, where every 90 days, the owner gets a notice, and let's hope they start realizing they've got a problem, and they start fixing it. Or we can do some more site visits, some knocking, you know, not knocking, not knocking enter, but knocking on some doors and saying, hey, you've really got to fix this problem. You know, sometimes it just becomes a manpower issue. But I think the automated notices might help, or the filing of foreclosures might stem the tide a little bit.
Well, I think you'll need to come up with a list of things that you actually have the power to do. And then, as a board, we'll figure it out. But my concern here is that if there's a life safety issue going forward, you know, what are we telling? And if we're going to foreclose, chances are, we're going to foreclose on a house that is not homesteaded. We're not going to foreclose on someone's homesteaded home. But why should a landlord be allowed to have tenants in a building that's not safe?
Agreed. That should not have happened.
And what are we telling them? That we're turning a blind eye?
No. And, you know, this case started, you know, a while ago, but I think moving forward, and I think that's what we should start working as far as process and procedure on some of these more egregious ones, is start getting a little bit more aggressive, using the building department, working with FPL, which we work with closely, working with fire rescue, and, you know, start, I think we'd get their attention if we start placarding and pulling power.
Well, didn't we have an amnesty program last year?
Yeah, we did.
And weren't these folks noticed last year?
I'm sure they were. Everyone that was in violation was noticed.
Okay. So explain to me how the amnesty program worked, because I'm really tired of people saying that they weren't noticed and they didn't receive notification.
If you had a lien filed, and if you had a lien filed, or if you had a lien within OFMB, you had X many days which to correct it. If you corrected it, all fines were waived. It was pretty simple.
And if you're a landlord, how were you noticed?
If you were a landlord, you were noticed however your property is registered in property praiser. So some of them probably have illegal homesteaded and didn't get noticed, because they had an illegal homestead. So it went to their homestead, where the tenants were, and the tenants probably tossed it in the mail. That happens quite a bit.
Because if they were noticed a year ago, and now they're only coming to compliance now because of a lien search, you know, that, I have a tough time with that one. They knew last year.
I tell you, we do a great job noticing folks.
Well, we need to do a better job. And I, this has been something, an issue that I have had difficulty with all along. So I think you need to come up with a legal menu of the things that we can do, and as a board, we'll figure out how to be more stringent on this, because this should never happen.
Right.
You shouldn't be in violation for 14 years.
I, I concur.
And if it's a life safety issue, who's, at the end of the day, who's responsible?
Pardon?
I said, at the end of the day, who is responsible if it's a life safety issue and something happens?
Ultimately, it's the property owner.
We need the teeth to make sure that that never happens.
Agreed. We'll come up with a menu of items. I'll flush them by legal, to make sure legal's okay with the menu, and present them. We can present them at Arizona BCC, if you'd like, and kind of go through it that way. Let me just, I have to flush out the process with building official, go through legal, and kind of make sure it can work with fire, work with PBSO, and make sure everyone's in tune. Because once we placard a building, I need to know that PBSO can go in, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you.
And also, at the same time, too, you know, we've got to be cognitive of throwing people out, but.
But we don't want to get into the condition that Commissioner McKinley has faced over and over again, where we've actually had to condemn a building.
I agree.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKinley?
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Moreno, I just want to thank you for bringing this up. I want to make sure that we don't completely eliminate the opportunity to do this. And I bring the example of Steve Bednar and Bednar Farms. And when they purchased a property out in Belgrade that had probably five, between $4 and $5 million worth of liens against it, and the property probably wasn't worth more than $200,000 to $300,000. But we determined, as a board at that time, that there was a public benefit to reducing and eliminating those fines, and that he turned around and invested another $3 million, completely rebuilt that structure for farm worker housing. And it's a beautiful facility, and we've used it as a model for some state and national leaders that have come to the area to take a look at it. But in the same breath, I think that when they, when staff, and I talked to Ms. Baker about this yesterday in my agenda review, when staff is looking at possibly putting together some program that you've talked about, that we put in some sort of prioritization, and I bring to light, once again, the condition of the facilities that we've had out in Pahokee and Belgrade most recently, that those life safety hazards are beyond comprehension. Nobody should be living in anything like that. And if we can put a timeline on how long they're allowed to float those fines and shut those ones down immediately. And just in closing, some of us will be traveling to the Florida Association of Counties Conference this week, as we put together the legislative agenda for the coming session. It'll be one of my swan songs, but I have introduced a policy statement that would put some teeth and some protections for local government in dealing with those types of housing situations, namely being that the taxpayers don't have to foot the bill when we've got to relocate those families. In the last six months, we've probably had to assist almost 60 families, and not one penny of that is picked up by the property owner. That needs to change, and some of these charges need to carry criminal penalties. And that's what I'll be introducing this week to the committees.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Moreno, for bringing this up. I saw that yet when I do my agenda review, and I actually, it bothered my mind how long this had been going on. So my question to you is, is it possible, can we get maybe a quarterly report, a tickler file, on, you know, who's in arrears on these, so we can see how many are backed up, and for how many months or years?
Yes, we can get ISS more than likely to put something together. And that's part of what I'm talking about, the noticing, to continually, you know, a lot of these people just get noticed once, and then it just, they think it goes away.
Do you know how much money was, I mean, part of this that makes it even more egregious, though, is the fact they were collecting rent, or rents, and at the same time, just ignoring the life safety issues. And now they've come to the point, so they've pocketed that money, and now they've come to the point where, you know, unfortunately, the chickens have come home to roost, and it's like.
I agree. I agree. So we will put some more safeguards in place, and bring you the menu of safeguards on our side, so we can be a little bit more aggressive and have a little bit more teeth.
And I do agree, you know, the flexibility, because I can tell you, I mean, unfortunately, I bought a property they didn't find in there, that there was liens that were by the city, didn't see them, or didn't find them, or whatever. And so I ended up having to pay them off myself after the close of the property. So it does happen, and if people do, can bring those forward, and, you know, so. Okay. Not taking.
It's clear, Mr. Rutter, we need to have a better way of handling this. Again, as I said before, it's not something that we want to be looked like we're doing this arbitrarily. Public benefit is certainly something that is to be weighed by us, but having just gone through the amnesty period, and given everybody an opportunity to clean up their fines by cleaning up their code violations, and then to have these come up, it's difficult to justify. So I'm going to look for a motion, one way or another, on how we're going to handle 3G1.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve item 3G1.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by the Vice Mayor, seeing no further discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. It is.
I'm not opposed. I just want a further discussion, especially when it has to do with life safety.
Very good. Then show it's unanimously approved, 6 to 0, with Commissioner Kerner absent. Thank you very much. I think it's an important conversation we just had.
Thank you.
All right. We're now going to get on to the fun part of the meeting. We're going to go on to our proclamations. And so I'm going to ask. Commissioner Bernard is all queued up. So Commissioner Bernard, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would Mr. Lawrence Monday, Elizabeth Monday, Lauren, and Lonette, and the family, please come forward? And also, would folks from the sheriff's office, from his chain of command, please come forward also? Before I present this certificate of recognition, I'd like to give Mr. Kerwin Lamott to say a little word about Mr. Lawrence Monday.
I'm pretty loud, so I don't really need to. Can everyone? Oh, please, you said, okay. Good morning, everyone. I just want to take a quick moment to just personally, and I guess publicly, acknowledge Mr. Lawrence Monday, or Mr. Larry, or Larry. We have a lot of names for this gentleman. But I tell you, he has spent a wonderful 30-plus years of his life with us at the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. And I wish that I had enough time to tell you about work ethic and just a person that you can count on. He's worked for me for the last couple of years, but even before that, we worked together. And a lot of young people in this world can learn a lot from this gentleman. He's never taken a sick day. He has, well, I think he was forced to take one sick day, because his daughters made him take a sick day because of an injury to his arm. But work ethic, professional, can-do attitude, I mean, he has given of himself more than I've seen in my professional career. And I've spent 20-plus years of my career with him in his 30 years. And I just want to say, we're going to miss him. We had a retirement ceremony of sorts from our department about two weeks ago now, and we're going to miss him. I told him when I saw him this morning that we actually came back here to ask him to come back, but, I mean, this gentleman is just, I mean, I'm lost for words, but I also just want to say, Larry, I can't repeat everything that I've already said to you before. And his family, and having given of him, given him to us for all these years, it's been a blessing for us. It's been a blessing for the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, and it's been a blessing for the community that the sheriff's office serves, to have this gentleman as a part of our workforce. And now we no longer have him, but we've all taken a little bit of Mr. Larry, as he goes on to bigger and better and more wonderful things. So that's it.
Thank you, Kerwin. On behalf of Sheriff Rick Bradshaw, the entire sheriff's department, his chain of command, it is truly an honor to present this certificate of recognition to Mr. Lawrence Monday. For your over 35 years of civilian service for the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, I've known Mr. Monday for over 30 years, and it is truly an honor to present this certificate. Please give him a round of applause.
Good morning, everyone. First and foremost, to get to this point in my life, I'd just, like all of us, just to give thanks to our good Lord and Savior. 25 years is a long time. It's a long time, day in and day out. And I'd just like to give a quick recognition to Commissioner Bernard for this presentation, my coworkers at PBSO, present and former, Baddeya, and my wonderful family. My dear wife, 34 years, day in and day out. She's been with me, feeling well, not feeling well, you know. She got me up and going. So I appreciate that, all the support, mental, physically, spiritually. She has been my rock, if I should say so. And I just want to thank everyone for making the extra effort just to come out here and recognize, and share with me this recognition today. So, thank you very much.
And while they're taking photos, may I please have Greg Reynolds up here from the Lagoon Keepers? Sure, come on up to this mic. And I believe we have a video queued up. If you all will look at the screen, you can see some of the work that the Lagoon Keepers have done around our waterways and estuaries. That was quick. Can you play it again? Thank you. So, we are here to declare September 16th, 2020, as Lagoon Keepers Day, whereas the Lake Worth Lagoon Environmental Defense Fund, Inc., also known as Lagoon Keepers, is a nonprofit corporation created in 2003 to remove marine debris and derelict vessels from the Lake Worth Lagoon and intercoastal waterways of Palm Beach County. And whereas Lagoon Keepers is dedicated to assuring the long-term health and safety of the Lake Worth Lagoon and the intercoastal waterway within Palm Beach County by tirelessly removing marine debris and derelict vessels from these waters. And whereas Palm Beach County has constructed many environmental enhancements and restoration projects throughout the estuary and waterways of Palm Beach County with a focus on the Lake Worth Lagoon. And whereas it is important to protect these projects, as well as the existing natural resources from the accumulation of marine debris and derelict vessels, vessel groundings. And whereas the Lagoon Keepers has removed over 411 derelict vessels within Palm Beach County waters. And whereas Lagoon Keepers has removed 228,000 pounds of marine debris from within Palm Beach County waters. And whereas the marine debris and derelict vessels removed by Lagoon Keepers has greatly assisted in keeping the Lake Worth Lagoon and intercoastal waterways clean and safe for boaters and marine organisms to utilize. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this 13th day of September, 2022, that September 16th, 2022, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Lagoon Keepers Day. Greg, would you like to say something?
I just want to thank the county. You guys have been tremendous. We've done everything over the last 19 years because of everybody in the county. It's all just a community effort, bringing all the assets together to accomplish what we've done. Thank you very much.
Good morning. I'd like to invite Jamie Kendall, the CEO of the Palm Beach County Food Bank, and in place of Marty Latour, who's the Chair of their Board of Directors, Mr. Jeff Sluggett. We're going to declare September 2022 as Hunger Action Month. Whereas food insecurity and the cycle of hunger and poverty are issues of high concern in the United States and South Florida, it is vital to raise awareness of the need to end food insecurity in every part of the country, and to provide additional resources that local residents may need. Palm Beach County is committed to working with the Palm Beach County Food Bank, that distributes food, provides education about the role and importance of food banks, and raises awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. Each year, more than 158,000 individuals in Palm Beach County rely on food provided by the Palm Beach County Food Bank and its network of hundreds of nonprofit partner agencies. The Palm Beach County Food Bank distributes nearly 13 million pounds of food and grocery products each year through its numerous food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations. The Palm Beach County Food Bank and other food banks across the country are hosting several events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in our communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled today, that September 2022 in our county is hereby proclaimed Hunger Action Month. I'd just like to add a shout-out to my good friend Laura Russell for her involvement in the Palm Beach County Food Bank, and for always keeping me straight on these issues. And a really big thanks to all of our farmers in Palm Beach County who grow a lot of the food that's donated to your pantry. Ms. Kendall?
Thank you. I would just like to thank the county commissioners on behalf of the food bank, but also on behalf of the 158,000 residents of Palm Beach County. 53,000 of those are children who are in need of food assistance. So we work every day to make sure that all of those are served and no one is left hungry. Thank you so much.
We have an exciting day with proclamations.
Okay. May I please have James Green, Faith Menfra, Amy Blackman, Anderson Feeb, Devin McLean, Tina Austin, Taruna Malhotra. Devin McLean, Tina Austin, Taruna Malhotra, and Tammy Lamppe.
And we are going to declare September 2020 as Palm Beach County Senior Center Month. Whereas each September, the Community Services Department Division of Senior and Veteran Services celebrates National Senior Center Month as an opportunity to showcase senior center programs, services, and activities. And whereas this year's theme, Senior Centers Strengthening Community Connections, recognizes senior centers as vital resources to connect older adults to the community by promoting independence and wellness and providing support and encouragement. And whereas the Division of Senior and Veteran Services operates senior centers in Lake Worth, Palm Beach Gardens, and Belle Glade, serving as focal points for the provision of services and improving the quality of life for older adults throughout Palm Beach County. And whereas senior centers provide older adults a variety of innovative programs and activities that can help them stay healthy, active, and engaged. And whereas senior centers have demonstrated to be integral parts of the health and well-being of Palm Beach County senior residents, now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this thirteenth day of September 2022, that September 2022 in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Palm Beach County Senior Center Month. And I'm so happy to be doing this here this year because last year we did this at the Senior Center in Gardens. So, thank you. Anybody want to say anything?
Good morning. I'm Amy Blackman. How is everybody doing? I just have a few words to say about this amazing team that we have. I want to thank the county commission for this proclamation honoring National Senior Centers Month. I proudly accept on behalf of the Senior Center team and would like to thank them for working diligently to provide activities and enrich the lives of approximately twenty-four point five residents, percentage of residents of Palm Beach County that we serve, which are over the age of sixty-five. Our dedicated staff that we have next to me here has worked to provide necessary services throughout the pandemic and have worked tirelessly to reestablish our vital programming since returning to full operation after the pandemic. We know that research shows that compared to their peers, senior center participants have higher levels of health, social interaction, life satisfaction. We also know that among the programs and services that we offer are meal programs, physical exercise, music enrichment, memory and emotional stimulation courses, cultural, we have arts and crafts, and adult daycare services, which are all very vital to our community. We're proud to be able to serve the residents with our full offerings of activities, excuse me, throughout the county at the Mid-County Senior Center, our West County Senior Center, and the North County Senior Center. And we appreciate your continued support. And please give this amazing team of ours a round of applause.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask Sharon Alexander, Angela Fisher, Philip DePiano, and Matt Spritz to come on up. While I'm waiting for them to come up, I'd like to acknowledge two graduates of our body. We have today, Carol Roberts is here today, and Karen Marcus. Thank you for joining us today. Okay, so, it is my pleasure to be issuing on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners a proclamation declaring September twelfth through sixteenth as Disability Voting Rights Week, which is appropriate since we have a general election coming up in November. So whereas there are over sixty-one million people with disabilities living in communities throughout the United States, and whereas more than thirty-eight million Americans with disabilities are eligible voters, whereas disability community has a critical interest in public policy enacted at local, state, and national levels and impacting the disability community directly. And whereas making sure people with disabilities have voting access, so it's essential if the public policy is going to address their critical needs as a people with disabilities in our community. And whereas voting is one of, one way for the disability community to have a say in determining the people and policies that impact our communities. And whereas REVUP, which stands for Register, Educate, Vote, and Use Your Power, is a national nonpartisan effort to build power and voice of the disability community in helping to shape public policy to better address their needs. And whereas members of the National Disability Rights Community, including REVUP, Disability Rights Florida, Access the Vote Florida, are organizing the Sixth Annual Disability Voting Rights Week to take place September twelfth through sixteenth, 2022. And whereas Unicorn Children's Foundation, which is an international nonprofit founded in nineteen ninety-four, dedicated to children and young adults with developmental, communication, and learning disorders, to assure that they have every opportunity to lead productive and fulfilling lives through education, advocacy, and research programs. And whereas, as part of its mission, in conjunction with Disability Voting Rights Week, Unicorn Children's Foundation will be hosting an online panel of discussion and questions and answers on September thirteenth at their facility in Boca Raton, which will serve as a designated voter registration site on National Voter Registration Day on September twentieth. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County that September twelfth through sixteenth in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Disability Voting Rights Week. And I'm going to ask Sharon Alexander, Executive Director of the Unicorn Children's Foundation, to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Weinroth, and the Board of County Commissioners for recognizing Disability Voting Rights Week. Some people may ask why this block of voters should be promoted, because shouldn't everybody vote? The simple answer is yes. But people with disabilities are very often isolated and disenfranchised. We need their voices at the table so we can create more inclusive and accessible communities for all. Thirty-two million Americans with disabilities are eligible voters. Twelve percent of Palm Beach County residents live with one or more disabilities. One in five children will be diagnosed with a developmental or learning disability. If it doesn't impact your family, it certainly impacts somebody you know. Voting is an important part of any democracy, a right that many of us take for granted. While voting by people with disabilities has increased over the years, there is still room for improvement. Why should we promote voting rights? Voters with disability represent a sizable portion of swing voters. Thirty-six percent lean Democrat, twenty-nine percent lean Republican, thirty-four percent are swing voters. When we make voting more accessible, everyone benefits. Take curb cuts, for example. While they were intended for individuals with wheelchairs to be able to access public places, they have benefited us shopping at Publix, they have benefited mothers with baby strollers. So what accommodations we make for individuals with disabilities improves the lives of everybody. Less than thirty percent of people with disabilities vote. Unicorn Children's Foundation is working with community partners to raise awareness of this important right and taking action to facilitate access for all. It is important for us to support disability voting rights as there are growing accessibility needs with aging populations. Most of us are temporarily abled. At some point in our lives, we are likely to experience a permanent or temporary disability. We thank the Board of County Commissioners for acknowledging Unicorn Children's Foundation role and for supporting the increased engagement of persons with disabilities so that we can collectively create more inclusive public policies. Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, my county commissioners, colleagues, it is a personal honor for me to do the next proclamation. For close to half a century, they have been called the first family of golf. They have been labeled the game's dynamic duel. The PGA Tour Commissioner, Jay Monahan, even dubbed them the greatest dynasty in American sports history. But for over fifty-five years, we like to simply call them Palm Beach County's very own Jack and Barbara Nicholas. There's no name more synonymous with greatness in the sport of golf than the name Jack Nicholas. And no single person has changed the face of the sport more than Jack Nicholas. The champion, the designer, the philanthropist, and the goodwill ambassador. But Barbara, let me talk about you for a minute. Wife of over sixty-two years, is considered one of the most influential women in the state of Florida and beyond. And her love of family and children has made Barbara Nicholas a transcendent figure. Through Barbara's commitment to the health, welfare, and future of children in our state and around the world, she has saved and transformed countless lives. This is why in November 2021, Barbara was inducted into the Florida Women's Hall of Fame during a ceremony at the Florida State Supreme Court. Known worldwide as the Golden Bear, Jack is just the fourth person in history and the first athlete to be honored with the Presidential Medal of Freedom, the Congressional Gold Medal, and the Lincoln Medal. And now, a proclamation from the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners. By God, that's pretty good. If I could have Jack and Barbara come on up. And while they're coming, I have met Jack and Barbara. I don't golf. The best I do is miniature golf. I'm pretty good at it. But ever since I met them personally, I just feel very, very comfortable with the two of you. And I know that you've done so much for the people of Palm Beach County, but also for the children throughout the world. It means such a difference. So let me read parts of this proclamation. Whereas Jack and Barbara met during their freshman year at Ohio State, if your family had only gone a little farther north than Michigan State, might have even more of a connection. Ohio State University, and married in nineteen sixty. Five years later, they moved to Florida. Have lived in the same North Palm Beach home since nineteen seventy and raised five children, twenty-two grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. Hope it's a big house. Whereas Jack's competitive career spanned five decades, and his legend has been built with one hundred and twenty professional tournament victories worldwide, including a record eighteen major championship titles, won over a twenty-five-year period. He is one of only five golfers who have won all of golf's modern majors, referred to as the career Grand Slam. And whereas Jack and Barbara are the heart and heartbeat of the Nicholas Children's Healthcare Foundation, which supports numerous pediatric healthcare services in South Florida, they have raised over a hundred and sixty-five million dollars since its inception for children in Florida and throughout the world. Whereas in 2010, Jack and Barbara were inducted into the Ambassador David Walter International Pediatric Hall of Fame. This honor is given in to recognize individuals who have recognized contributions to the health and happiness of children. In 2015, the Miami Children's Hospital is rebranded to Jack Nicholas Children's Hospital. Two years later, the Miami Children's Health System was rebranded to the Nicholas Children's Health System. Among those that they have promoted is Jupiter Medical Center and the Nicholas Children's Outpatient Center in Palm Beach Gardens. Whereas Barbara Nicholas received the PGA Tour's Ambassador of Golf Award, was the inaugural winner of the PGA of America's First Lady of Golf, and was chosen as the first winner of the Winnie Palmer Award presented by the net Golf Writers Association to an individual who has consistently given her time, energy, and enthusiasm to those less fortunate. In 2007, Barbara was honored by the African-American Golfers Hall of Fame with its humanitarian award. Barbara was also awarded the Florida Governor's Medal of Freedom for her longtime support of children's health. So for nearly fifty years, Jack and Barbara Nicholas have been known as the first family of golf, and together through their dedication, they have helped to enhance access of world-class health for children and families in South Florida and beyond. And I wonder if you could be joined by your daughter. Welcome. Would you come on up? We'll accompany them. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, assembled in regular session this thirteenth day of September 2022, that September thirteenth in Palm Beach County, Florida, is hereby proclaimed Jack and Barbara Nicholas Day.
Well, what an honor to receive this wonderful proclamation. Hold on, I need this. Can you hear me? To receive this wonderful proclamation from the Board of Palm Beach Commissioners. We're so thrilled and so happy to be here, and we want to congratulate the other recipients. We're happy to be in their company this morning. So thank you for that. Jack and I feel very lucky to live in Palm Beach County and blessed to be able to give back to the children and families in Florida. Palm Beach County has given us the opportunity to build something much bigger than a career and a business. It's given us a chance to build a legacy. Golf has been our vehicle for giving back and building a legacy. I love the words that Jack shared with the group not long ago. A legacy is not what you do on the field or inside the ropes. A legacy is what you leave behind for others and how you are remembered. So thanks for your trust in us, for sharing our passion to help children. Children are our reward for living, and we will treasure this special proclamation. God bless each and every one of you, and thank you for your trust in us.
Well, let me join Barbara and say thanks for this wonderful honor. Thank you, Commissioners. And, you know, we're feel blessed to have been able to help the, all the children and families of Palm Beach County and beyond receive medical attention. It's, you know, we've been put in a position and very fortunate to have been put in that position by making a couple of four-foot putts. If I hadn't made those couple of four-foot putts, you know, we wouldn't be standing here. So thank goodness for the game of golf that has allowed all this to happen. We moved to Palm Beach County, we said, a little over, about fifty-five years ago. We've raised our five children, all our grandchildren and great-grandchildren, all right here born, well, twenty of the great-grandchildren or grandchildren and great-grandchildren are born right here in Palm Beach County. And so, we've been so proud to be able to call Palm Beach County our home. And we thank you all very much, and God bless you. Thank you.
Mrs. Nicholas, I would just like to thank you as a twenty-five-year member of the Junior League for all of your dedication and service to the Junior League of the Palm Beaches. And I would be remiss, I'm taking the mayor's spot for a moment, if I didn't ask our resident member of the LPGA and our only professional golfer on the county commission if she didn't want to say a few words. Commissioner Marino?
Thank you. Jack, Barbara, I've known you
I'm now going to ask Andrea Garcia, Ashley Craig, and Margie Cross to come on up. We just mentioned the Junior League, and this is a proclamation to recognize them and what they're doing for families in our community. We're declaring September 24th to October 2nd as Diaper Need Awareness Week. And this may sound like an odd reason for a proclamation, but it's actually very important, especially for working parents who have to put their children into daycare, and if they don't have diapers, they can't do that. So let me read to you from this proclamation. Whereas not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys report that 1 in 3 mothers experiences diaper need while their children are less than 3 years of age, and almost 50% of the families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply. And whereas on average infants or toddlers require at least 50 diaper changes a week, it's been a long time since I had to do that, over 3 years. And whereas there are no government-assisted programs for purchase or provision of diapers, and a sufficient supply of diapers can cost as much as 6% of a full-time minimum wage worker's salary, causing economic hardship for the family. And whereas a supply of diapers is usually an eligibility requirement for infants and toddlers to participate in childcare and quality early education programs. Whereas addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for low-income families and improve health for families and their communities. And whereas the Junior League of Boca Raton Diaper Bank recognizes the importance of diapers in helping provide economic stability for families and distributes them to families in need. Now therefore be it proclaimed by this Board of County Commissioners that the week of October 24th to, I'm sorry, September 24th to October 2nd is in Palm Beach County going to be proclaimed Diaper Need Awareness Week. And we thank you ladies for the work you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, County Commissioners. We appreciate the proclamation, as it creates amazing awareness for what we're doing and for the need in this community. So, and you are absolutely correct. The Diaper Bank was founded in 2011 by the Junior League of Boca Raton, and just recently in January, it launched into its own 501(c)(3). And the reason for that was because of the need. The need was so great in our community. And just to repeat a little bit, because it's so impactful, that 1 in 3 families in our community, 1 in 3, cannot afford diapers. You cannot drop your child off to daycare without an adequate supply of diapers. So you can see these low-income families trying to break the cycle of poverty, right? Trying to get themselves out of it, yet they can't even drop their child off because they don't have a package of diapers. So, the Diaper Bank, what we do is we service 15,000 families, excuse me, 15,000 people, 3,500 families, and 17 nonprofits in our area. We just distributed our 5,000,000th diaper this past year in 2021, and we're on track
Guillermo Carrasco, who's Chairman of the Board of Directors, the Guatemala Mayans Center,
to do even more now. So this proclamation is extremely important, and we're so very grateful to all of you for this honor and to create the awareness that truly is needed out there. And we really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
and Haider Haider, I'm sorry, I didn't say that word, first name correctly, and especially
And I'm going to ask our resident Junior Leaguer, Commissioner McKinley, to come and join us for this picture.
Mariana Blanco, the Assistant Executive Director, and of course Father Frank Olafen, who is the Director of the Guatemala Mayan Center. If you could come forward, please, as I read the proclamations. All right, here it is. I'm going to read this. This is very special to a very special group of people. We're going to declare September 26, 2022, as the Guatemala Mayan Center Day. Whereas 50 years ago, the Migration and Refugee Service of the Diocese of Palm Beach County was founded with Father Frank Olafen as the Director, and years later was incorporated as the Guatemala Mayan Center in Palm Beach County. Whereas a generous humane spirit of our county led to providing sanctuary to survivors of genocidal wars in Central America. And whereas the diversity and culture of our county is enriched by the infusion of Mayan heritage. Whereas the Guatemala Mayan Center provides services to families from over 28 countries serving more than 11,000 individuals. Whereas the Center provides support to help family members integrate into the mainstream culture. Whereas the Guatemala Mayan Center's educational programs are designed to redress hardships experienced by indigenous Mayan mothers and their infants by implementing progressive strategies. Whereas these hard-working new immigrants require advocacy and direction in healthcare access, food insecurity, legal assistance, and translations. The Center occasionally provides legal representation for those who are victims of civil rights violations or those who have experienced workplace accidents. And whereas the Guatemala Mayan Center was instrumental in the struggle to make counselor-identification cards more accessible to Palm Beach County's immigrant community, and you worked very strongly and intensely with the members of our county commission to do that. Whereas to acknowledge the Guatemala Mayan Center founder, Father Frank Olafen's decades of service to the community. Wait a minute. Is today September, September 26 we're going to announce is your day, but that happened, is that your birthday?
That's my birthday.
That's his birthday. Wow.
In another century.
And we're going to designate September 26, 2022, as the Guatemala Mayan Center Day. So therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County assembled in regular session this 13th day of September, that September 26.
Buying drinks.
Did you hear that? Father Olafen is going to be buying drinks. It's going to be, I'll be there. As a Guatemala Mayan Center Day, congratulations. If I could have, I think the county commissioner for this area is you, Greg Weiss. If I could have the Vice Mayor come and join us for this declaration of this proclamation to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Turning it over to the women.
You're a smart man.
Are we taking photo, or?
You can say so.
When Columbus showed up here, I was, I won't say he discovered, when he showed up here, the first people he met made a colossal impression on him. And in his diary, he calls them, he tells us that they are Indios, people in God, right? We kind of screwed that up later, and we started to call them Indians, which is a couple of thousand miles off the mark. But Palm Beach County has had the opportunity to discover the truth of what Columbus saw, that these people are, in truth, God with us, Indios. They, in the 80s, the Cold War unfortunately ravaged their country, and a quarter of a million of the Mayan people were murdered. And 450 villages were totally annihilated. The survivors of those villages managed to make their way into Indian Town in Martin County, and from there into West Palm Beach. And it is to the eternal credit of Palm Beach County, to the eternal credit of this town and all of us in it, that they were received and protected, and their humanity was recognized and upheld. God bless you all for what you do for them, for their children. Mr. Nicholas just left here. He does all our teeth with his mobile lab, and we have had little babies that have been totally physically reconstructed on his tab. So Palm Beach County in every way has just risen to the cause. Let me finish. All around the world today, I guess warming is the big issue, but certainly the next biggest issue is people on the move. Anywhere you go on Earth today, people are on the move, and you can measure the societies of the world by their capacity to think about that and deal with that. We'll always be able to say that Palm Beach County did well when it first met people on the move. Thank you. God bless.
Going to have a picture right over here. How you doing? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Palm Beach County. All right. I have the distinct honor to be joined by Palm Beach County Fire Rescue along with their Honor Guard. I'll ask them to come forward at this time so that they can join me in declaring October 8 and 9, 2022, as the National Firefighter Memorial Weekend in Palm Beach County. Whereas firefighters play an essential role in saving the lives and protecting property and communities throughout Palm Beach County, throughout our state, and throughout our nation. And whereas the citizens of this county, state, nation value and honor the courage of firefighters who risk their well-being and safety daily. And whereas every firefighter gives their life to protect people in every community of this nation. And whereas the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue will add nine names to the Fallen Firefighter Memorial Wall in Colorado. And whereas during the weekend of October 8 and 9, 2022, residents of Palm Beach County will stand with our firefighters to honor their sacrifice and continued devotion in protecting the communities in which they serve. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this 13th day of September 2022, that October 8 through 9, 2022, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed National Firefighter Memorial Weekend.
All of you have been to one of our ceremonies at one point or another, where we have always used the tolling of the bell as part of that ceremony. And each time, whether it is a recruit graduation, a promotion, or a changing of command, you have noticed that the bell is tolled in a different sequence each time, and that is because in the history of the fire service, the bell has been used as communications, as a resource of communication, to notify the firefighters and the public of what is happening, whether it is a large-scale event or even in the death of a firefighter in the line of duty. As of this coming weekend, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue will have 21 names of our firefighters on the memorial wall out in Colorado Springs, Colorado. And that's including the nine that Commissioner Kerner just mentioned now, that we will be adding to the wall just this weekend alone. Honor Guard and Pipes and Drums are traveling out to Colorado Springs to render those honors for all those firefighters who will be added to the wall. After I read the names of this morning, the bell will be struck in the sequence of 5, 5, 5, acknowledging their death in the line of duty. And in no particular order, Raymond Hennessy, James Crenshaw, Edward McCarron, Michael Lefty Thompson, Timothy Monahan, Roger Forrest, James Miller III, Jim Vinsand Sr., and Michael McJury. Honor Guard. Ready? Two. Ready? Two. Yes, please. How do you want to do that? Okay. So how do you want to? Do you want to go in a dais? That would be nice, I think. Can we bring them? Can we get chief? Yeah. Can we get the bell? Yeah. Do you want to use some? Yeah. Do you want to use some? Yeah. Do you want to take a picture? Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Good morning. So let me see if I can do this properly. Buenos dias. Es un placer poder celebrar este evento con ustedes.
Yay! Woo!
When I have to, I can do that. It's my honor today to be here, and we are going to be declaring September fifteenth through October fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two as Hispanic Heritage Month in Palm Beach County. Whereas Hispanics of every race, class, and multiple nationalities have made historic contributions in, in, to the growth and strength of Palm Beach County in countless recorded and in unrecorded ways. And whereas the historical influence of Hispanic contributions is outweighed only by the vital and integral role Hispanics currently play in shaping the present and future of Palm Beach County in business, education, law, science, technology, and numerous other fields. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationwide and begins on September fifteenth, the anniversary of independence for Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, with Mexico achieving independence on September sixteenth, Chile on September eighteenth, Hispanic Heritage Month has been celebrated in the United States since nineteen seventy-four. And whereas the Hispanic population in Palm Beach County is more than twenty-three percent of the one and a half million people who call our county home, the Hispanic Human Resources Council, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Florida Hispanic American Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Bar Association, Hispanic Education Coalition, El Sol Neighborhood Resource Center, Caradot Center, Latin Quarter of West Palm Beach, Farm Worker Coordinating Council of Palm Beach County, Esperanza Center, Community Center, the Democratic Hispanic Caucus, and Latino Republicans of the Palm Beaches continue a history of working on multiple initiatives and partnerships to the benefit of our entire community. And whereas Palm Beach County's library systems, our Office of Community Revitalization, Parks and Recreation Department, our Art in Public Places Program, Palm Tran, Palm Beach County TV Channel Twenty, our Office of Equal Business Opportunity, Department of Housing and Economic Development, Consumer Affairs Division, our Youth Services Department, and the Cooperative Extension Service work in collaboration to promote and enhance the local Hispanic community and its cultures. Whereas to invite community involvement, the Palm Beach County Community Services Department will host a Hispanic Heritage Tour that will celebrate and highlight contributions and cultural and economic impacts and growth of the Hispanic Latino community in Palm Beach County. And whereas in celebration of Hispanic American Heritage Month, we honor the contributions of Hispanics have made in Palm Beach County, and we highlight an important part of the rich diversity that keeps our community strong. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, assembled in regular session on this thirteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-two, that September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two in Palm Beach County will be known as Hispanic Heritage Month. And I know we have some groups here. I know there's a number of the organizations are here, but before they come down and we take a picture, I would like to invite up some other folks for some recognition. Is Carlos Mahecha here? Abraham Segundo, Myrdaluesas, and Helman Ruiz. They are, they are part of the Hispanic media. And they have made countless contributions for many years helping to inform and educate both in Spanish and in English our Hispanic community. So I will have personally, I am providing you with certificates of recognition for the efforts that you have made on behalf not only of our Hispanic community, but all of Palm Beach County. So thank you, and we'll, uh, if somebody, is somebody here to speak? Or, no. Nope, all right. All right, here we go.
Juan, Juan.
Juan. Gone.
Buenos dias!
Buenos dias!
You know, on behalf of the total Hispanic population in the county, you know, and I've been a resident of this county for over thirty years already here. My daughters went to school here, et cetera, et cetera, the whole thing. But I, when I moved to this county, my company transferred me here to this company, the Hispanic population was not even eight percent. Today, you know, one of the agencies we work with is the Census Office in Atlanta. We provide the volunteers to do the census. We have representation of twenty-one countries, from beautiful Mexico to Dancing the Tango in Argentina, you know, and the Caribbean, and they are residents of this county. At the same time, when you look at the school district, out of the hundred and sixty thousand students there, thirty-seven percent of the students are Hispanics, you know. And that's the largest minority in the whole county, you know, for this field. But it's about, it's not about being, the way we look at the students, those are the future employees. They're the future managers. They're the future owners of businesses. So it's about how do we work together, how do we move it forward, how do we keep growing and going forever? So thank you very much. Muchas gracias. We love you all. Thank you.
(applause). Thank you, Juan. And for the representatives that are here from our various Hispanic community organizations, if you want to come down and we'll take a picture, thank you very much.
Commissioner Kerner, you have the final proclamation.
Very good, Mayor, but with your permission, if I may, just back up for a brief moment to invite Chief Kennedy of Palm Beach County Fire Rescue to the podium to make some comments in reference to the firefighter memorial proclamation.
We are always happy to hear from our chief.
Good morning. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker, County Administration and staff. Commissioner, thank you. For this opportunity for awareness and recognition for the National Firefighter Memorial Weekend. Just a brief introduction of who's here today. So we have our, our union president, Jeff Newsom, and members of his team. We have our administrative staff, our familiar faces that you see with me often. And then we have some special guests, the men and women that are always on the line, taking care of our community, part of our three hundred and twenty-seven firefighters that are out there today protecting our community. And under that leadership, we have Captain Bookmeyer. We have Driver Operator Buckley, Firefighter Paramedic Manger, Rescue Ninety-One Lieutenant Monet, Firefighter Paramedic Pineda, and Firefighter Paramedic Reyes. And I also want to mention those faithful Honor Guard members that have always shown up at ceremonies like we saw at nine eleven. We have Commander Steen Erickson, and then we have Sean Pamplona, Robert Eastberg, Brad Haverilla, Miguel Johnson, and George Cardosa. I also want to thank our PIO team and our communications team for always being here and moving us along. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to the men and women of Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. And if the mayor, with his permission, I would love just to remind this community about the distinct honor and award and certification that Palm Beach County Fire Rescue received just last week, I believe. If, if you, if you don't mind just recapping the, the recognition.
Absolutely. So we have been working at that for years to achieve the ISO Rating One, which is the Insurance and Service Office. And our county has been working under different leaderships to get there. And under Chief Dern's leadership, he raised the bar once again, and we are now recognized as a Class One department. And I am a recipient of that as well with the rest of our community and our firefighters that are out there. Thank you.
Chief, while you're up there, I just wanted to tell you that I, I thought the ceremony that you're, you put on for nine eleven with the cadets was very meaningful. I know all of us who were there were really inspired by the young men and women who were up there making their presentation. And especially the young lady whose dad is a member of the Delray Fire Department, speaking about how much nine eleven meant to her, even though she was not born until after nine eleven occurred. So I want to thank you very much for making that a very meaningful ceremony.
Thank you for the opportunity to have services like that. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kerner, one more time.
All right, and we may have another Fire Rescue Department in Palm Beach County later on. We'll see. Excited about that. All right, very good. Proclamation declaring September, two thousand and twenty-two as National Preparedness Month. And we have here Ms. Blakeney, our emergency manager. We're delighted to have you and Stephanie, our department director, and all of your staff here with us today. I've had a firsthand, not that I want to relive it, but I've had a firsthand seat, front seat, to watch you professionals in action protecting our community at the Emergency Operations Center and countywide. And I'm delighted and honored to be a part of this proclamation declaring September, two thousand and twenty-two as National Preparedness Month. Whereas National Preparedness Month helps raise awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters and emergencies that could happen at any time. And whereas this campaign is committed to putting people first and reaching all communities wherever they are. And whereas this year's theme is a lasting legacy, the life you've built is worth protecting. Prepare for disasters to create a lasting legacy for you and your family. Whereas education, prevention, and outreach help disseminate preparedness information into the hands of Palm Beach County residents and visitors. And where Palm Beach County has had more than sixteen percent population growth since two thousand and ten. And whereas new residents need to be educated on hazards that could occur in Palm Beach County. And whereas this year's theme features a call to action to be prepared for any disaster that could impact our community, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in this regular session on this thirteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-two, that September, two thousand and twenty-two in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed National Preparedness Month. And then if you, if you don't mind saying some words.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, Mayor, Administrator Baker. It's so important for us to focus on preparedness each and every day. The fact that we can take this opportunity, and thank you so much, Commissioner Kerner, regardless of the hazard, whether it be a hurricane, which we're right in the height of hurricane season, a pandemic that you spoke of, or, or a wildfire or a flood. It's important for every one of our residents to be prepared so that we can be more resilient in Palm Beach County and respond and recover quickly. So four simple steps, make a plan, build a kit, be informed, and get involved. Thank you so much.
And one of my priorities this term as mayor has been not to be at the EOC. And so far, I have been, shh, okay, knock on wood. Just have to make it to election day. Okay, well, thank you, everybody. This was really terrific. I know Commissioner McKinley would like to make a comment.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to ask for a point of personal privilege, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Because it doesn't happen often, and you were able to point out two very special attendees. If you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to invite Commissioner Carol Roberts and Commissioner Karen Marcus to the podium. I'm gonna ask our photographer to stand by as well. It's, it's, it's a coincidence. I didn't plan for this to happen, but you know, I've got sixty-three days left. I just did the calculation. And I mentioned earlier that today I will leave to head down to Miami for my very last Florida Association of Counties conference. There are only three people who have served as president of that association. And all three of them are in this room, and all three of them are women. And it has been quite an honor to follow in the footsteps of Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Marcus as one of those presidents of the Florida Association of Counties. The things that I have learned, the leadership qualities that I've tried to replicate from both of them in service to that organization. But the friendships and the partnerships that we've been able to form through that association work are something I'll carry with me forever. But I just wanted to, Craig, and as you know, the Public Information Officer for the association would kill me today if I didn't take the opportunity to get a picture of, of, of three different presidents from the same county being in the same commission chamber today. So thank you for letting me be part of your, your sisterhood and your, your special club of past presidents of the association.
I want to thank you for also being part of that. Karen and I, when, when I got here, Karen was here. But there were very few women, and Karen really set that role model. And then I came along two years later. And up to that point, there had only been one other woman aside Karen.
Mm-hmm. Marla Young.
Peggy Ebed, I think.
Yeah.
Yep. And the difference today is that we've all been role models for young women today in government. And I thank all of you, certainly the three women that are here as, as county commissioners, for following and making it possible to make sure that that glass ceiling has been cracked quite well. Karen?
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley, and it doesn't have to be your last fact meeting. You can go as a civilian, too. We've been known to do that because of, you know, our DNA. But just thank you. It's, it was always an honor and a privilege to represent Palm Beach County. I actually served longer than a year because the president before me resigned to run for the House seat. So I had to fill her term and then my own full year of term. But it is a great organization. Palm Beach County was always very active in it and really highlighted a lot of the legislation that came out. So thank you for recognizing us and having three of us in the room at the same time is great.
I hope to see that before at some point. I would like to take a photo with the two of you, if that's okay.
You are excused. Take your picture. And again, Commissioners, you are always welcome in this chamber as graduates of this very select group.
We, we had no idea that either of us would be here today. It was a nice surprise to see Commissioner Roberts.
And a nice surprise to see Karen and me.
Very good.
I always enjoy meeting with Karen.
Yes.
We have lots of memories together.
We cause a little trouble on the dais together.
All right, take the picture so we can get on with our work here.
We're hurrying, we're hurrying. Oh, thanks.
All right, while they're taking their picture, I just want to refresh your recollection. As I said, we are going to plow through this agenda now. We are going to take a break around twelve o'clock, depending on where we are on the agenda. Probably we'll take a break until two. At two o'clock, we'll resume, do matters by the public at two o'clock. And then if there's anything left over from this agenda, we will take it on then. And then after that, we will recess, or actually, we will adjourn. And then we will reopen the meeting at five after five today to handle the budget deliberations. So that's your order. Several of us have appointments for lunch, so we're gonna break out of here twelve-ish, depending on where we are on the agenda. That being said, and still having my quorum here, we're gonna plow through this agenda as expedite, expeditiously as possible. So the first item before us is a public hearing, which was noticed for nine thirty a.m. Can I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
I have a motion so, uh, seconded by Commissioner Marino, in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved. Show that is approved 6 to 0. Commissioner Kerner is off the dais, but he is in the room, so he will presumably be on some future votes. All right, this is a matter that is coming before us. It's a request from Highland Beach for a COPCN, which is a Pilot Program Services Primary Provider Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity for the town for the period May 1, 2024 to December 31, 2028.
Since we've had a presentation, I can, I'd just like to go ahead.
We can move this forward. I do have one non-speaking card, which is in favor of the COPCN from Fred Rosen, which will be made a matter of the public record. All right, these were just handed to him. Now, I have your cards. If you feel that you want to address this body, we will certainly allow you to come forward. I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 cards. It looks to me like this is going to go through pretty expeditiously, but if you feel that you would like to discuss this, I see these are all in support. So I will call you. If you would like to speak, let me know. If you don't want to speak and just say, "I support it," that'll also be noted for the record. So David Stern.
I support it.
Okay, David Stern indicated he supports it. Jason Chudnawski.
I support it.
Mr. Chudnawski supports it. Brian Demas.
I'll support it as well.
Mr. Demas supports it. I have Mr. Richard Greenwald.
I'm also a strong supporter.
I have Mr. Greenwald in strong support. I have Mr. Halpern.
I am a supporter.
Mr. Halpern is a strong supporter. I have Diane Mathueman.
I am a strong supporter.
Ms. Mathueman is a supporter. And the final card is for John Shoemaker.
I would like to speak.
You would like to speak. You are invited up. You will have three minutes or any part thereof to let us know. And don't change your mind on me. It says "support." Okay, very good. You are recognized.
I support. Name is, again, John Shoemaker, here as a resident of Highland Beach and also as a commissioner. And the fact is, this town has gone through a massive effort over the past couple of years. And so the town, not just me, has made a serious commitment in funding an initiative that I believe is somewhat unique in the last few years, if not the last 30 years, that we are going to establish and are well on our way for a fire and EMS operation. I would like to not only demonstrate my own commitment to this as both a resident and as a commissioner, but also the fact remains that as a rare Vietnam Vet Combat Infantry who unfortunately has a Purple Heart, I know the value of a medic in an EMS organization. As I said, I've had to use them personally in the past. I support everything that they try and do. They're such a professional, skilled operation. But we need this for accountability for our town, that we can deliver improved service, response times that are acceptable, and that we can affect it directly rather than contract it elsewhere. At the same time, obviously, response time, safety, and accountability is important, but important both operationally and financially. Lastly, I'd like to say that we want to be a good neighbor. We're trying to demonstrate that not only within the county, for the county, and for neighboring towns. And we're doing it even now with more than just fire EMS, but in the case of our building department for a neighboring town. So we are and will continue to be a good neighbor. We will continue to make that commitment for top priority, top service, and support for our citizens. And I want to thank the mayor and the commissioners and the staff of Palm Beach County for, I think, being very good in helping us go through this process in a very deliberate, complete, comprehensive way. So thank you again very much. I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoemaker. And I've had conversations with your mayor, Hillman, and certainly understand the priority that you've placed on this. And I'm very happy to see that out of the council of 14 council members, they voted 14 to 0 to grant the COPCN. And as I said, it looks like that's going to be the way we're going to be going now. I'm looking for a motion. I have a motion by the vice mayor. I have a second by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is unanimously approved, 6 to 0. Mr. Shoemaker, you can carry the message back to your commission.
Absolutely.
Okay, we are going to move on now to item 5B1, Water Utilities. Mr. Bonlaren, this is an item that I seem to recognize from a past meeting. Where are we going?
You do. And so the Board of County Commissioners asked for a postponement and continuance at our, a couple of months ago, a previous board meeting, and asked us to do some follow-up with the residents. We have done some of that. We sent out certified letters, held a local public meeting that we had a number of attendees, both via Zoom and in person, had a very productive meeting. And after that, staff, including utility staff and our county attorney's office, thought it'd be important to send out an additional certified letter to ask for that vote again. We had some new residents that came in. So we are asking that the Board of County Commissioners postpone and continue this public hearing on the adoption of the resolution under motion A and the approval of the work authorization under motion B to December 20, 2022.
Okay, I have a motion by the vice mayor. I see the resident commissioner would like to speak.
Are there public comment cards?
Do we have public comments on 5B1? We do. All right. Do you want to take the public comments first? Okay. I'm going to hold your motion abeyance, vice mayor, until we get the cards turned.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. We'll start with Dylan DeVito, and then followed by Dylan, we'll have Charlie Tant, John, and then Natalie Merritt Tant.
Commissioner, Dylan had to leave. He had an accident. One of his workers got to a car accident, bad accident, so unfortunately, he had to leave the meeting before he could speak.
Okay.
All right, the record will indicate that he indicated he was opposed to 5B1.
And now we have, and I apologize, but it looks like Charlie Tant or John Tant, who's in opposition, following his comments. Mayor, we'll have Natalie Merritt Tant.
Okay, now, I'm going to ask you to clarify. Come up to the microphone. When you say you're in opposition, does that mean you're in opposition to the motion, which is to reschedule this to December 20? Or are you in opposition to the idea of being assessed for this water system?
Correct. I'm in opposition of the water system.
So you're not opposed to this motion to postpone?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify it. You certainly still have three minutes if you have a comment you want to make.
Yes. I'd just like to bring into consideration, when this was first brought about, there was a vote posted throughout the neighborhood, and I am the one that was forged. My signature was put on a note that I did not sign, and I just want to make that very clear, that I've been opposed to this from the beginning. Secondly, we've been discussing the reason of using the water treatment for this area and the difference in what we're getting from city water as opposed to the well water. We're going to have more of an issue with that. The well water in our area seems to be cleaner. We have run a test on a couple of things, and I just want to let you know that that is an issue that we're, one of the reasons we're opposing this. The other factor is the fact that the amount that we were told at the very beginning, when this first started out about four or five years ago, I was told this was going to come in at around $6,000 or $8,000. Now we're looking at somewhere between the $30,000 to $50,000 range, which is not only going to interrupt my life, but those on the street as well. Let me see here. One other thing that has happened, which is very recently, is there was a letter sent out to all the homeowners by one of the residents on the home who happens to have a water system or is a water system owner. He does this kind of plumbing and things. The letter that he sent out was basically trying to change the votes from the no's to the yeses by providing us with free hookup service. I think that's another issue that we need to look at as the reason why we should not be doing this. Beyond that, like I said, our water treatment is well. My water, I think I've got a high sulfur content is about all I've got, and I can take care of that in one easy step. And if we bring in the city water, we're going to end up with other issues, bacterias and things. And I happen to work in the neighborhood south of our area, and it's Westlake area. And down there, we've actually seen a lot of homeowners there that are actually putting in systems even though they already have city water. So this is another reason we oppose it. And the one last thing I'm going to have to say about this is the, one thing that people are not looking at is with this, we are going to be accruing four additional bills to what we already have as a resident on the establishment. So we've got the loan for the waters, for the pipe coming down the street. We're going to have a loan for the meter, and then we're going to have a loan for the hookup, maybe. And then we've got the additional water bill that we'll be getting, which we do not currently have. So those are the four things that I'm really opposed to about this.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate them.
All right, next, we'll have Natalie Merritt Tant, followed by Sharon Bomero, and then finally Jeff Bomero.
Good morning, commissioners.
Get the microphone and tuck down, please.
Good morning, commissioners. Why did the water department wait so long to have an information meeting and send out a new vote petition that extends the deadline to September 30, when they had the last commission meeting on July 12? Why aren't homeowners' petition signatures required to be notarized, especially after my husband's signature was forged? Why is its signed contract not giving a certified return receipt requested prepaid envelope to make sure it is received back? A friend signed up for county water in January 2020. Installation was November 2020. All the inclusive fee to the county was $5,000. There was a fire hydrant in front of the home, not included her fee. The next-door neighbor meters was installed by the county, but they never hooked up. If they did, the county reimburses her $2,500 of the $5,000 fee paid. The estimate of our street is more than three times that amount. In the last year, two friends have the same petition, one Palm Beach and one Marin County. Both needed 100% in favor and did not pass. We believe this petition and everyone like it should be the same. My neighbor Ed told myself, my husband and Jeff, that they would talk neighbors into this and don't care if they can afford it, and that he doesn't need water, but he wants it because it will increase the price of his house at least $50,000 when he sells in a few years. That's not right. I know my friends and my husband and I wouldn't consider knowing another family would have financial trouble. We all have personal hardship, family issues, and things in our homes that need to be done. We work really hard every day and just want to be able to decide what, where our money goes to. We have no issues with our water and do not want county water. We cannot afford it, and it would make things very hard for us and our friends on the street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Sharon Bomero, followed by Jeff Bomero, and that'll be the last speaker.
Very good.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for your time again this morning. I'd like to address the packet that we received. It was actually from Brian Hollinger. He's a resident on our street. He referenced reasons being for the project, one being an increase in our property values. He listed two comp properties. The difference between the properties was 800 to 1,500 square feet. So that unfortunately renders that null and void. In doing some research, we found out its location, schools, a new roof, AC, hurricane windows and doors, pools that add value. Unfortunately, county water does not. Buyers look at county taxes in making a purchase decision. The amount of this project would affect our profit if we sell while paying it in the next 20 years, and show not only higher taxes, but tax liens on our property as well. In 2010, the county and state investigation deemed the Laxahatchee cancer cluster unfounded. We, at that time, had had a professional oil and solder, water and soil test, I'm sorry, free of charge. We would have moved if an issue were revealed. Unfortunately, Brian Hollinger now records in that packet that Laxahatchee is a cancer cluster, but offers no proof of that and otherwise no proof of the necessity as to why they want this project. The reasons being that well water is cancer-causing, and it stains our homes and it corrodes our pipes. We don't have that problem at our residence. I want to know how many other streets in Laxahatchee are petitioning for county water because it is cancer-causing and corrosive. And as I said, we have no issues at our home. But should we? We know that there are remedies that are less expensive also than county water. County water does contain a lot of chemicals to make it safe. Personally, at our home, we only add salt, and we test regularly. Some of our neighbors unfortunately have chosen to lie, manipulate, harass, antagonize, bribe, and act immaterially to win this. Brian Hollinger affixed a handwritten cardboard and signed to his gate. It read, several actually, one of them read, "A real man wouldn't let his family drink cancer water." Suffice to say, this is more than a contentious situation due to their choices and behavior, and it has caused a lot of undue stress, and it's literally brought me to tears. My husband is a wonderful provider, but I still thrift. I shop BOGO deals, I coupon, I do whatever I can to help my family's finances stretch, especially in today's economy. I feel it's best for my family. I just want this project to have that same consideration. I want to give my autistic daughter voice lessons because she gets great joy from singing with our church.
Okay, we have your comments. We understand that you are not in favor of this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more speaker?
Yep, just one more speaker. Jeff Bomero.
Commissioners, how are we today? Everybody good? It was a great meeting in the beginning. This is, we're here again on another very contentious issue, as was stated in July 12. You heard what happened earlier, and you heard what these, my neighbors and my friends and my family have said. We have several of them that are going to be voting no on this. I can tell you that right now. And it's not because of the quality of water, it's because of the amount of money this is going to cost. I, in good conscience, could never tell someone, "Hey, guess what? I want county water, and if you can't afford it, oh, well." In the August 24 meeting, which I attended via Zoom, the homeowners that were there never mentioned the amount of money this is going to be. There's going to be a tax lien on the pipeline, there's going to be a tax lien on the meter if you get it. At $4,500, if you use a DPP program through the county, at 5.5%, it comes to $7,500 over a 20-year period, if you look at it that way. If you look at it the way you say, "Okay, I'm not going to hook up to the water," which is fine, it's still going to cost you $123 a month just for the pipeline, and $4,500 for the meter, so you're talking under $32, that's $150 a month, to not even have something that I don't even want, I don't even need. I don't need that. I just, it doesn't make any sense why there's so much money. And to put a tax lien on my home and raise my taxes $1,500 when we just had a meeting, I think it was July 12, about trying to keep the mileage rate down for people, but now my taxes are going to be raised. I wouldn't do that to my family or friends. And I consider the people on my street friends, not just, "How you doing? How are you?" I've been there for almost 20 years on my street. Now, the, I reviewed the video before I showed up here, obviously, to make sure I knew what I was talking about. There was a slight discrepancy that I think I noticed. The vote count was eight yes, zero no's, four no replies. The four no replies on that day did not change. They did not change on that day. Two other neighbors came in, Mel Gonzalez and Natalie. That would be six. So it came down to, when I was here, I said no. So that would be three no's, three no replies, and six yes. On that day, July 12, it was tabled. On that day, July 12th, it was tabled, it failed, and we were done. Now, as for the new vote, we received a letter in the mail. It was that way, and I have the numbers, I have the actual addresses to show that, to show that what's what it was. On the day that the letter was sent, we received the letter saying, "Guess what? We're going to go for the September 12th, 13th meeting." Nothing about a vote. And then two weeks later, we received the vote August 26th, or August 31st, sorry, to sign it. I don't have a lot of time, I have like 10 seconds left. So the way I look at it is, this is about affordability, not desirability. The taxes will be raised, and I don't want to pay it neither to my neighbors or my friends.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you much, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For purposes of discussion, I will second Commissioner Weiss's motion on this item.
Good, show the Vice Mayor's motion has been seconded by Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you. And, you know, back in that meeting, the original motion failed for lack of a second, so the only thing we actually voted on that day was to postpone this. I'm going to be careful not to get chastised by any of my colleagues for wandering off the motion on the floor here. So Motion 5B, 1A, and B deals with the postponement and the revote on this item. I think what the residents who were originally in opposition need to recognize is that we heard them, because I think staff's original plan was simply to hold a community meeting to educate the community on the project and how it was going to move forward, and what they heard were discrepancies and concerns in the way that that vote was conducted. And so in fairness to both sides, those who were in opposition and those who were in favor, they were taking into account the recommendation from the County Commission to do that by certified mail and have agreed to go and do that vote again with the certified mail process, so there can be, "No, we didn't receive anything" type of comments moving forward. And so I do support that. I hear the concerns from those who were opposed and don't feel that they were, their vote was fairly cast, and I also feel for the concerns of those who felt their vote was fairly cast and supported this project. So I think the motion before us today is a good compromise to be able to redo that vote, and the outcome will be the outcome. That is the process we use for all of these situations across Palm Beach County. And so I'm happy to second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner McKinley. And again, I think this body does, wants to do what's right for the community, and if they don't want this, then we certainly don't want to jam it down their throats. So we're now going to vote on the motion to postpone. All in favor, all opposed. Show it's unanimously approved, with Commissioner Kerner now back on the dais. Okay, we'll move on.
I'll move forward, 5C1.
We have a public hearing on planning and zoning. It's staff recommending an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners adopting an interlocutory service boundary agreement with the City of Green Acres for coordination of future land use. It's been moved by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
No cards? Anybody have any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed. Show it's approved unanimously. Okay, let's move on. Told you we could move right along here. All right, we are now on Item 5D1. The Vice Mayor is making a motion to approve this resolution. The Board of County Commissioners, do I have a second?
Second with one public speaker, Mayor.
Okay, we have, we're going to have a second by Commissioner Kerner, and we are going to hear from the public on this.
Michelle DePotter.
Did you want to speak on this?
No, impact fees, I must have voted out. Sorry.
Okay, 5F1 then?
5F1, thank you.
Okay, so there's no public comment on this? Do I, I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, all opposed. Show it's approved. 5D1 is approved unanimously, thank you. Moving on to Item 5E1, from our good friends at Palm Trans, a motion to adopt approving the 2022 update of the Title VI program for Palm Trans Transportation Services. Do I need a presentation?
Mayor Weinroth, if you don't mind, if we could just read something into the record just quickly, just for FTA purposes?
No.
I'd like to ask and see if our executive director, Clinton Forbes, can just read a brief narrative.
Mr. Von Laren, you are recognized. Mr. Forbes, you may read.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the board. The motion is recommending that you adopt Palm Trans 2022 update to the Title VI program. As a recipient of Federal Transit Administration grants for Palm Trans, Palm Beach County is obligated to demonstrate compliance with the requirements outlined in Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, or national origin. The county submits a formal Title VI program update to the FTA every three years incorporating updates to fulfill all federal obligations. This update identifies both steps already taken and any additional steps that would be taken to ensure that for all programs and activities supported by federal financial assistance, Palm Trans provides services without excluding or discriminating on the grounds of race, color, or national origin, or without creating additional barriers to accessing services and activities. So working with our consultant, WSP, who's also present, the update has been completed and is included in your item. The update must be approved by the Board of County Commissioners prior to submission to the Federal Transit Administration, so at this time, we are asking for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes, and just to make a point, that the county's current Title VI program expires on November 30th, 2022. Okay, I had a motion by, okay, Commissioner Moreno says she's ready, and Commissioner, oh my god.
McKinley.
McKinley is seconding.
63 days, you're already forgetting me.
We got the Eminem show over here, you know?
Eminem show. All in favor, all opposed, 7 to 0.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're moving on now to Item 5F1. This is on impact fees, our county administrator's favorite topic, and she's smiling, even though we did not give her extraordinary circumstances.
Mr. Mayor, can we, I think we've heard this presentation over and over again, can we hear the public comment?
If we, let's do public comment, and then if there's any clarification the board needs, then we'll look to Sheri for some insight.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We have Michelle DePotter, and then one more speaker, KT Caitlin.
I'm assuming we can summarize your presentation with the word no.
Oh, I'll give her a benefit of the doubt.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay. Sorry about the confusion earlier. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners, County Administrator Baker and Council. Michelle DePotter, CEO, the AGC, 515 North Flagler Suite, 910 West Palm Beach. So first, I'd like to say, Commissioners, we appreciate your vote at the last meeting on removing the extraordinary circumstances which you just mentioned. That would have allowed for exorbitant increases, in which we believed, and ultimately you did, it could not be supported with the criteria that was being suggested. While no one in our industry, including developers, like to see increases and basically more taxes, especially during the current challenges that we're facing, we appreciate the more tolerable approach that's been presented from the study and will not oppose them as are suggested and presented to you today. I do want to just go back to restate for the record that when the time becomes available, that the AGC does have an opportunity to have a seat on the Impact Review Committee. I've stated that before, I know there's some alternate seats there perhaps, and the reason for that is we have distinct expertise. Our members are building commercially, they're building public facilities. We've been the voice of construction since 1949, I won't go into that, I know you guys are aware of that. However, I do want to acknowledge as well as appreciate the good work and due diligence of our colleagues from the residential side, GCBA, and the elected officials that did serve. And then I want to thank you, the staff, County Administrator Baker, Derek, Rob, and Sheri, for meeting with us multiple times and helping us bring us up to speed. We had to come behind a little bit, it's a complex interest, and we do appreciate it. And if you might allow me to wander from this topic for a public service announcement, I'd really appreciate it. Most of you are aware that it's Suicide Prevention Month. Last week was Suicide Prevention Week. Our industry is certainly not immune from that. I don't know if the public knows, but 53.3 construction workers out of 100,000 fall to suicide. That makes our occupational group extremely high, and certainly above the 12.93 per 100,000 in other groups. So that's important to us, and it's important that we bring public awareness to that, as well as the new national hotline, 988, if someone is suffering. So I just wanted to be able to state that, and I appreciate you allowing me to do so. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Potter, we appreciate that. Yes, Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michelle mentioned having AGC to be on the Impact Review Committee. What can we do to make that happen?
We presently have three alternate seats open, and I've spoken to Mr. Potter about this, they're welcome to submit, and we will send them through the normal process. They have to know what's going on.
Actually, I think that what I want is a permanent seat. I don't think I want an alternate seat. We've talked about this, and so I'd like to know what's the process for us to make it a permanent seat.
County Administrator?
Simply give us direction, and we'll need to modify the ordinance.
Can we just do a motion? I'd like to do a motion to add AGC as a permanent position on the Impact Review Committee.
Second. I have a second by Commissioner Kerner. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved unanimously. Thank you.
That's the process.
Commissioner, County Administrator, did you want to make any other further comment? No? Okay.
All right, KT Caitlin.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Baker, and Mr. Moore. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm KT Caitlin, and I'm here representing Gold Coast Builders Association. On behalf of Gold Coast Builders Association's 280 member companies representing all facets of the building trades, related professions, and builders in Palm Beach County, we want to state for the record that GCBA supports adoption of the impact fee report presented to you today, and we wish to thank everyone in achieving an acceptable result through this process. As individuals that live and work in Palm Beach County, we look forward to being your partners in the future. Again, thank you all for your hard work and dedication.
Thank you, Katie. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 5F1.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, I have a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. Show that has been approved unanimously. All right, we're going to move on to page 85 now, that's Item 6B2, which was...
We have to do Item 5G1.
That was 6B2.
Wait a minute.
You are correct. It's now the move 5G1.
Wait, 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 slow down a second.
6B2 on page 85 is now 5G1.
Oh, for public hearing?
6B2, right? Which is now?
5G1.
No, it's 5G.
Okay, so we're saying the same thing. We're on page 85.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and move approval of Item 5G1. This is related to the ordinance requiring the written fair notice of termination of residential tenancies with specific duration in certain tenancies without specific term and written fair notice requirements for rental payment increases for residential tenancies with specific duration in certain tenancies without specific term, providing for enforcement, et cetera, et cetera, just because we had a little agenda debacle there. I would just like to thank the residents who reached out to me requesting that we extend this to 90 days, and thank the county attorney's office for informing me that that would be a violation of state statute. We're prohibited from doing anything beyond the 60 days, so we're doing as much as we can at our disposal right now without coming into conflict with state statute. And again, make reference to some changes I think we all should be advocating for in state statute moving forward.
Very good. All right, so let me catch up. Do we have a motion on the table yet?
Yes, I made the motion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner McKinley, second by Commissioner Bernard, and again, since I was the one who had asked Mr. Von Laren to do the work on this, I thank you very much for taking the time to put this together so expeditiously, and I'm sure our residents will be very happy to see at least some relief from what's going on with the rents that are skyrocketing in our county. That being said, all in favor, all opposed, show this is unanimously approved, 7 to 0. Thank you very much. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move Item 6A1A and B. This is funding for the airport.
Oh, my favorite. Just to reiterate, this is an item that's before us because it exceeds the threshold of $325,000, and our friends in Tallahassee feel it's important for us to help the airport make this decision. So I have the motion by the Vice Mayor, I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. All in favor, all opposed. That is approved. That's 5, I'm sorry, 6A1A and B is approved. We're now moving on to 6A2A and B, Vice Mayor.
I'd like to go ahead and move 6A2A and B.
Second. And this again is the same situation. Vice Mayor has made the motion, Commissioner Kerner is seconded, and this is to approve, again, for some contracts at the airport, 6A2A and B. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
You call the vote on that one?
I got a light here.
I'm on the next item, call the vote on this one first.
I'm sorry, I'm too slow. All in favor, all opposed, show it is approved unanimously. Okay, we're moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you start conversation on Item 6B1A and B, I need to disclose a voting conflict on Item 6B1, the adoption of a resolution establishing a non-adverbal special assessments pursuant to the Palm Beach County Local Provider Participation Fund ordinance for the purpose of benefiting assessed hospital properties through enhanced Medicaid payments for local services. I sit on the Board of Trustees for Palms West Hospital, and while this position is unpaid, I've been told by the county attorney's office it would be a conflict for me to vote on this agenda item. In such, in order to comply with the code of ethics, I will abstain and not participate in any discussion regarding this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley, and your recusal is noted, and you'll obviously file the necessary paperwork. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move forward, 6B1, and note that we have two public speaking comment cards, Don Chester and Colleen Ernst.
Okay, so 6B1A and B has been moved by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by the Vice Mayor, will now take public comment. And the first comment?
And Colleen doesn't need to speak, or does, she indicated that she is available to answer any questions and only if needed.
Okay.
Just on behalf of the private hospitals here in Palm Beach County, I want to thank you for your support last year, and respectfully request your support again this year. Special thanks to the Commission, and also special thanks to Reggie Dern and Assistant County Attorney Helene Zvid. Did I get that right again this year? Okay, thank you. Appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Chester, we appreciate you coming out to support this item. All right, we have the motion, we have a second. Do we have, Commissioner McKinley is off the dais. All in favor, all opposed, show it is approved, 6 to 0, one abstention. Okay, we're now going to move on to Item 6B2, which we already did. Now we're going to move on to 6C1. This is Westgate Belvedere Homes Community Redevelopment Agency. I know we've all heard from our friends over at Westgate, and they've explained what's before us today. Do we need any further?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 6C1.
A second. I have a second, I have Commissioner Bernard making the motion, and I have the Vice Mayor making a second. All in favor, all opposed, show that is approved, 6C1 is approved by a vote of 7 to 0.
On Item 6C2, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 6C2.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, I have a second by the Vice Mayor.
And also states that neither the taxing power nor the faith and credit of the county nor any county funds shall be pledged to pay principal or redemption premiums, if any, or interest on the loans.
Very good, and again, I have the second by the Vice Mayor. Any further discussion, Commissioner Kerner?
I certainly support this item, but I just want to make sure that we gave the opportunity to the Director if you had any comments to make.
You are welcome to say something, but I think it's going to pass.
Yes, thank you very much for this opportunity, and again, thank you, thank you both Commissioners for supporting us. We have a very good team working in the Westgate area, not only from our staff, but also from administration, and also from the county attorney's office. We have Richard Cena, he's a newbie in the county, he's been helping us with these items, and we've gotten great results from his assistance. So we're looking forward to using the funds from the budget and also from the loan to continue the activities in the Westgate area. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm looking... I'm looking, okay, I've got, I've got a motion, a second. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved, six to zero, with Commissioner Sachs off the dais. Okay, we're going to move on now to item six D one. This is again Housing and Economic Development. Do we need a presentation?
I'd like to move forward, six D one A, B and C. This is an excellent item. Thank you for the, for the good work.
Okay, do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner McKinley. All right, Commissioner Marino, you'd like to be recognized.
I'm, I'm just a little disappointed that we put two million dollars out on the street and we had one applicant. Is that correct?
That is correct and we were also disappointed.
So we have money to give out and nobody's banging our doors down. Okay, that's just a, you know what? That's just an editorial. Thank you.
Okay, this is, this editorial was the view of one of our colleagues. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved unanimously, six D one A, B and C is approved. We're moving on to six D two. Staff is recommending a motion to approval, a proposal of ten million, three hundred, two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, broken up very carefully here in our agenda package. I guess we should probably have a little presentation on this just to explain what's going on here.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning to the board. So this is a ship allocation from the state and this year we have ten point three million dollars. We do have a presentation and Jonathan Brown, our Director of Housing, will make that presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker. So today we're bringing before you our State Housing Initiative Partnership Program, our ship budget recommendations. We have presented our recommendations to the Commission on Affordable Housing and today staff is recommending approval of the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three ship program, which has a fiscal year of July one through June thirty of two thousand twenty-five. You have three years to expend these dollars. This year, our allocation from the state is approximately ten point three million dollars. The strategies, the proposed strategies includes purchase assistance with and without rehabilitation, foreclosure prevention, owner occupied housing rehab, emergency repairs, single family new construction and developer rental assistance. And today we seek your approval of those strategies.
I'd like to move six A two A and B forward.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner McKinley. You're going to sit here for this one? All in favor, all opposed. Show it's approved, seven to zero. Okay. Didn't expect it that quickly, did you, Commissioner Bernard? Okay, we're back to six D three. Commissioner Bernard, if you want to stick around, we can probably kill this one too. All right, any discussion? Any motions?
Six D three, I'll move forward.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner. Do I have a second? I have a second by the Vice Mayor. This is to approve a budget amendment of two hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved, six to zero. Commissioner Bernard has left the dais. These are state ship funds which required no local match. Commissioner Marino, did you want to be recognized on that last item?
I do. I want to, I want to put this out again. The last three motions is worth twenty million dollars for programs in our county. Again, I want to see people knocking our doors down for these dollars. And I know it's not the fault of staff. They put the information out. Just, there aren't people coming here and asking us for our dollars. So I know that we have a housing bond on the agenda in November. Again, we have money to give out today. These programs are necessary today. A housing bond doesn't put a single unit in the ground for two to three years. The problem is today, we have dollars today. We need people to come and take those dollars. Come and bring us programs that we can invest in. So that's my editorial for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marino. I'll call a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved, six to zero, with Commissioner Bernard absent. Did we take a motion? Well, let's, let's give someone credit for this. Commissioner Kerner, I thought you had made the motion.
He did and I seconded it.
I did on the last one, but I saw that it's in District Six, so.
Okay, it's in District Six.
We're not on six, we're not on sixty-four. Now we're on sixty-four.
Oh, my apologies.
We were on sixty-three before. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Kerner made the motion on sixty-three and I seconded it.
Okay. Are we all on the same page? Has the clerk figured that one out?
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, sixty-three was initially kicked off by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by Vice Mayor Weiss and passed six, zero, and we're now moving to sixty-four.
And that one, I will be happy to move approval and give the Colusa Point Two project twenty million dollars in bond funding. Neither the taxing power nor the faith and credit of the county nor any county funds are pledged to pay the principal redemption premium, if any, or interest on these bonds and just say hallelujah, we are getting this project fully funded. Thank you very much.
And Commissioner Marino is very happy to second that, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved, six to zero. Moving on. We're now on six E one. Any, we're getting money back on this one, so we should all approve it. Anybody looking for a presentation? Anybody want to make a motion? I have a motion by Vice Mayor. Do I have a second by Commissioner Marino? This is to approve six E one A, B and C. All in favor, all opposed. Show this is approved, six to zero. Thank you for coming by. All right, I told you we could probably get this done by noon. Six F one. We have a recrea, Parks and Recreation. There's a memorandum of understanding between Palm Beach County and the city of Riviera Beach and the town of Palm Beach and the town of Palm Beach Shores for the recreational educational use of leased area of Peanut Island. Does anybody need a presentation? Seeing none, who would like to make the, Commissioner Marino has made a motion. I have a second by the Vice Mayor. Commissioner Sachs, you want to be recognized?
No.
No? Okay. Commissioner Sachs has nothing to say, all in favor, all opposed. It's a six to zero. We're moving on.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming to play.
But don't leave, Eric.
Yeah, Eric, don't, don't leave. We might have something to say about you later. Commissioner McKinley?
Going on to, I'm waiting for you to call six G one, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, did you make a motion down there?
I'm waiting for you to call it. Are we moving on to six G one, Mr. Mayor?
I am losing my hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item six G one and thank George Lindley and the leadership of the Palm Beach County Sports Commission for recognizing the importance of the equestrian industry in Palm Beach County. Also like to recognize, I know at least one of his board members, Don Dufrane, is in the audience today, resident of Wellington. Mr. Dufrane, thank you for being here and thank you for doing what we can to protect and maintain the equestrian industry in Palm Beach County. Thank you, George.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Sachs, what do you want to add to this?
I'd like to also recognize what you all have done in the tourist development board and especially with this international polo. I think this is the first time in our history. And I wonder, Mayor, if we could have Mr. Lindley just say a few words about the significance of having this championship here in Palm Beach County. I heard that Don Dufrane is going to be entering his sixth ponies and going around the course, but I wonder if, all kidding aside, I wonder if George, if he could have a few minutes just to describe what, what an incredible event this is going to be for, for our counties here.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, County Commissioners, Administrator, Bredeania Baker. It's, it's amazing to think about the sentiment that we were in, what we were dealing with a year and a half ago, two years ago. And there's no doubt that your sports tourism industry is seen as strong as it's ever been and that's because of the leadership of this board and our county administrators and all our TDC meetings and our, Commissioner Sachs is the TDC chair. And we talk, we talked about it daily and weekly and at all the meetings about how we can come back and we are, we went from a recovery to a comeback to now record-setting levels of tourism and sports tourism. So it's exciting. There is a presentation. I will keep it brief. I see that, that the incentive here is, is to move, to move along. This is the Olympic equivalent for the sport of polo. So polo is not an Olympic sport. It is the, the FIP, the Federation of International Polo, is recognized by the International Olympic Committee and this is the grandest stage for the sport on a global level. It's, what we're talking about is the twelfth Federation of International Polo, World Polo Championships, which will take place over a ten day span for, in this coming fall, from October twenty-sixth through November sixth. Our sports commission is partnering with three organizations, the FIP, it's the global authority for the sport, the United States Polo Association, which has offices based right here in Palm Beach County, which is the national governing body for the sport, and the United States Polo Association Global Licensing Company, which is responsible for all of the branding and all of the marketing of the sport across the country and beyond. The venue is the, is the International Polo Club, now renamed the National Polo Center within the Village of Wellington. It's a dynamic sports facility that our sports commission has utilized for more than just equestrian sports. I know, Bredeania, you know that, you've been at the events. Commissioner McKinley, you've been extremely involved and instrumental in the equestrian industry and you've seen how we've transformed the International Polo Club into a haven for hosting some of the largest amateur sports that's ever taken place in the United States. And that's happened right here in Palm Beach County. As you said, Commissioner Sachs, this event has only been in America, on American soil one other time, twenty, twenty-four years ago in Santa Barbara, California. It's the second time it returns to the United States because of Palm Beach County and the state of Florida. It happens every three years. The last time this event occurred was two thousand seventeen. It was in Australia. Argentina was the champion. Did not happen in two thousand twenty because of a global stoppage of our sports industry when the pandemic occurred. We are bringing it back to life five years later and it's the first time now that this is, event is happening in a post-pandemic era and we're anticipating a lot of pent-up demand and, and a great opportunity to really embed international markets now within the Palm Beaches. We'll have eight nations that will qualify for this event. There's two that receive an automatic qualifier, Argentina as the defending champion and because Palm Beach County is the host, that means the United States National Team gets an automatic bid, the U.S. qualifies. There's, right now, Mexico, Uruguay, Spain and Italy have also won their zone playoffs. There's twenty-five nations that were competing and we'll have the two other nations identify themselves here in a couple of weeks. The big benefit's significant tourism. We're looking at at least three thousand direct participants, hopefully, and we believe we'll have strong contingency of traveling spectators from the Latin American nations, from Europe and hopefully across the United States. Easy to get to five, six thousand room nights. The impact could be greater if we have a strong turnout and about six million dollars in economic impact. More importantly, this event will be televised on national TV. It will join the likes of the Honda Classic, the Boca Raton Bowl, our key G A Tour and Champions Tour event. Two, two of the sixteen games, because this is a sixteen game tournament, will be televised live on ESPN, one game with the United States National Team and then the championship game, which takes place November sixth. I want to thank all the TDC agencies, Discover the Palm Beaches, the Cultural Council, the Film and TV Commission. They're helping our sports commission tremendously in hosting this event. And in, in order to be brief, I'll sum, I'll conclude by talking about one other dynamic and it has to do with how I started, the International Polo Club, that is now the National Polo Center. And the reason that venue has been renamed is because the United States Polo Association, the NGV, has acquired, very recently, has acquired the International Polo Club. It was a purchase. They now are embedded, have embedded themselves in our county for the foreseeable future. Palm Beach County is recognized as the permanent home for polo in America. They've, in addition to hosting the World Polo Circuit, the Gottlin Apollo, that includes a U.S. Open Polo Championship, the top polo players and teams in the, in the world are competing right here from January through April. In addition to that circuit being strengthened, we will see player development forums happening in our county. We will see polo academies and we will see more polo tournaments and more international events. So it's really, it's a business relocation play here, or really expansion, because I, the United States Polo Association has been entrenched here, but now from a permanent home standpoint in this awesome venue. And finally, I don't know if I could get the final slide to, I wanted to show you where our sports commission really comes into play outside of the equestrian season. This facility is a, is a dynamic venue for the Palm Beach County Sports Commission and this county. Seven polo fields create a great opportunity for us to host some of the largest sport events, showcases, tournaments that not only exist in this country, but exist in, in the globe. A polo field's about a thousand and fifty feet in length, one, four hundred and fifty feet in width. That means that we could present six lacrosse fields, soccer fields, flag and tackle football fields, rugby fields on one of those polo fields. So this event, this layout was from November of two thousand twenty. We hosted an event called the IWLCA President's Cup. If Guinness, if the Guinness Book of World Records was in our county, they would have documented the world's largest lacrosse tournament, no doubt. There was nearly five hundred girls lacrosse teams that traveled from across the nation. I think we only had about seven teams from the state of Florida. And the reason we won that bid is because we could present forty-seven lacrosse fields on one footprint, on one setting. There's nowhere else in the United States that could do that. And so it's a huge competitive advantage for our sports commission. These events that we bring here, that was in November, but we will bring events from May, June, July, October, November during the county's offseason. And we've already had talks with the United States Polo Association, now the new owner, and we, there's definitely a plan to continue to work with us to use it for multiple sports, not just equestrian sports. And that, that event, in addition to the five hundred teams, about nine thousand girls lacrosse players, high school age, there is about a thousand coaches and with family members, correlating family members and attendees, twenty-two thousand people came to Palm Beach County. We've hosted the World's Artist Phil Taki Tournament, two hundred plus team soccer tournaments, rugby events. That particular event was fourteen thousand room nights. We created a village within the village. The only, the only challenge we had was traffic issues on the first couple of days, but.
Thank you, George.
Figured it out.
Appreciate it and we obviously are very excited that we've become Wall Street South, but we remember our roots, that tourism is very important to us and sports is a big part of that tourism. County Administrator?
I know it's, I stand between here and break, but I just want to recognize George at this meeting. He is one of the most enthusiastic young men that has led this growth in sports tourism in this county. I am very proud of what George has accomplished along with the other TDC agencies that support him and the TDC board that has supported him, but he has done an outstanding job. And I'd like to recognize Liz as well, because she's been there with us along with Ryan in getting these things done.
We certainly do appreciate it.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Thank you, Bredeania.
All right, Commissioner McKinley, I bet you want to make the motion.
I did make the motion.
Okay, so we have our two sports enthusiasts on that side of the table. Commissioner McKinley making the motion, Commissioner Marino making the second. All in favor, all opposed? You have got a six to zero vote. Thank you. We're going to recess at the Board of County Commissioners, convene as the Child Care Facilities Board. We have a couple of appointments in front of us. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Seven A one.
This is seven A one, seat two and two, and seat seven. All in favor, all opposed? Show that is approved, six to zero. We're journeying as the Child Care Facilities Board, reconvening as the Board of County Commissioners. We're going to defer the board appointments and Commissioner comments and the administrator's comments until this afternoon after public matters, but Commissioner Kerner, I wanted to give you a moment to raise the issue that you sent us a note on.
Thank you, yes, Mayor. As you're all aware, my office distributed yesterday a inter-office memorandum asking for your support for naming Center Drive in John Prince Park, which is a park very near and dear to my heart and in my district, after, or to be renamed, Eric M. Call Parkway to honor his decades of service in Palm Beach County. And, and although he's not out the door yet, I'll just say briefly how, how much I've enjoyed working with you directly and your staff, Eric. You've been a champion of our park system and, and in many ways, the founding father of, of.
park system, and, and in many ways, the founding father of, of the footprint of our parks, and we're very appreciative of your service to Palm Beach County, and I hope you'll look fondly upon this motion, and ultimately the Parkway being named in your honor.
Do we need a motion at this time, or just consensus, and you have this brought back as a regular motion with the, can you take a motion?
Wait, wait, I think.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner. I have a second by?
Sacks.
I think, I think it's already been, already been done.
Oh, look at this. He brought something with him. He's got.
Got to see if it passes, though.
All right. Eric, would you please come up? Let me call the vote. All in favor, all opposed. Show it unanimous. Eric, come on up. Okay.
It's amazing what our sign department can do.
I'm telling you how quickly they can be.
It's so nice. It's so special.
I don't know, it's maybe better back here.
Just a reminder, we are needed down on, what is that, Third Street, for a picture with the bus.
All right. Eric, did you want to say a word before we dismiss you?
Yes, I'll say it. Almost 39 years has been quite a, quite a long time, but a very productive period of time and enjoyable period of time. You know, I thought back about it. I think I served before 45 different commissioners and four different county administrators during that time. We, we built a lot of parks, I think 70% of the park system during my time. I'm getting a little emotional, so if you pardon me. It's special. We can't do it without the support of the commission, and administration, and a great staff. And I will say, we're leaving it in really good hands, so thank you very much for this. It really means a lot.
Thank you, Eric.
Come back, Eric.
Sorry, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, can I be recognized, please?
Just thank you for the 39 years. I can't let you walk out without saying that. I grew up with you here in the county. I've seen a lot of parks go up, a lot of preserves go up. You've been in the middle. Your predecessor was awesome. So were you. He trained you very well, and you did the same. You trained Jennifer. So thank you very much for all your hard work, the support you give your staff, and just can't thank you enough. So we'll, we'll see each other during our celebrations, but I want the community to know that you were an integral part of our park system, our national award-winning park system.
Wow. Thank you.
Don't run away yet. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Well, I just had a quick question for Ms. Baker. Did you violate child labor laws when he was hired?
Actually, I was the baby.
I, I, I hope we can all look as happy and healthy after 39 years with the county, but thank you for your service and what I've seen you do to transform the Glades is, is wonderful. And most recently, I'll talk about what we did over the weekend under my comments later, but I want to thank you for working with the Belgrade Housing Authority and helping them, using our resources to help them put together a recreation plan for those two housing complexes. Thank you so much for always going above and beyond.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Kerner?
And thank you, Mayor. And finally, I'll just close by saying that you're aware that John Prince Park is a very special place for, for myself and for my family, and I wanted to share with you that my parents will be celebrating their 50th wedding anniversary next year in John Prince Park, and that you had a lot to do with that, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerner. I understand you went parking there, too. All right, we're going to recess now until 2 o'clock, and we will be back and finish the rest of our agenda after matters by the public. My colleagues, I'll ask you to come downstairs for a photo op.